Welcome, everyone. This is Lisa Edinburgh, Chair of the Westboro School Committee. Today is Wednesday, November 16th, 2022. This meeting of the Westboro School Committee is called to order. Please stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic where rich it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to notify everyone in the room with us tonight that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed by Westboro TV. School committee meetings are available for remote viewing or listening on Westboro TV's government channels, Verizon 28 and Charter 192, and online on the Westboro TV YouTube channel. Thank you to Westboro TV for covering the broadcast this evening. We have with us tonight Superintendent Amber Bach, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Daniel Mayer, Director of Finance and Administration Dave Gordon, Vice Chair of the Westboro School Committee Steve Durett, School Committee Members Raghu Nandan, Kristin Vincent, and Steve Bachelor, he may be running a little bit late, our Student Representative Aratrika Ghosh. Recording Secretary Jen Benton will be here shortly. Oh, look at that. Stephen Bachelor has just arrived. Welcome. We have staff from Westboro TV here, and I'd like to personally welcome everyone sitting in front of us and those watching from home. Our agenda for this evening is as follows. We'll begin with an approval of minutes from November 9th, 2022 Regular Session Meeting, then hear from Amber Bach with the Superintendent's Report, followed by the Assistant Superintendent's Report, then we'll hear from the Director of Finance and Administration's Report, and continue with the School Committee Member Reports, followed by the Building Project Updates. We'll then potentially hear from some citizens during citizens' requests, and soon thereafter, Dave will walk us through the maximum limits of student activity checking accounts and the clubs and activity counts for FY '23. We'll then continue as Amber and Dave present Budget Presentation Number Three, followed by a thorough discussion of the capital planning update. Finally, we'll enter into an executive session and then adjourn for this evening. So we'll begin with an approval of minutes. Do we have an approval of the minutes from November 9th, 2022 Regular Session?
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Okay.
The meeting minutes included what I did say at the last meeting, forty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars, but it should be changed to kilowatt-hours, the actual credit. At the same time, the net credit is around twenty-three thousand dollars. And as, as I think I mentioned in the discussion, we have a deduct against our generation of value every month based on demand charges that's offered by, or taken, I should say, taken by National Grid. That amount is variable monthly. It ranges from three thousand dollars to roughly sixteen hundred. Right now, we're into the darker period of the year, so the demand charge is going to be larger. And we'll, I'll offer some other discussion later on that.
Okay, so do we have an approval of the amended minutes from November 9th Regular Session? Make a motion?
I'll make, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll move, I'll move the amended minutes.
Okay, and second, thank you, and all in favor? I see five to zero, five being present, and we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report. Amber?
Thank you. It's good to see all of you. So these are rapid back-to-back meetings, so we just met last week. I don't have any additional updates other than go girls volleyball. They are playing right now, and they won the first, I think they won the first game, do you know? They won the first, first game, game one of the, so we wish them luck, but we have a lot of budget talk to do tonight, and that's where I'll focus my time.
Okay. We'll move on to Daniel?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Dave?
No, no reports tonight, and again, I will update with the budget discussion.
Okay. So we'll move on to School Committee Member Reports, and we'll begin with Student Liaison Aratrika Ghosh.
I would fairly like a brief report because I feel like my last report summed up a lot of what was going on at the school, but just like Mrs. Bach had said, school spirit's been really high because of the girls volleyball game. I wish them well. I hope, it sounds like they're doing well already. I wanted to say that actually today, Ms. Broomfield was at the school and working inside the ESL classrooms and the ESL, with the ESL teachers, and she's already finding ways and strategies to implement some of the ideas we got from our student forums into those classrooms, and because she's in the process of making some curriculum additions to the ESL program, she's, me and her are actively now working to find a way to have students involved in the actual curriculum process, which we should be doing like next month or so, I would imagine. But yeah, throughout this whole process, Ms. Broomfield's just been so amazing. Not only has she been so helpful and informative, but she's been really encouraging of having students within that process, so that's been amazing. The other thing is, I had a conversation with Mr. Callahan, and it was about the lawnmower thing that I mentioned last meeting, but he's going to talk with buildings and grounds, and it should, it seems pretty feasible just to have them turned off for SAT tests, ACT tests, and AP tests. And yeah, I think that's kind of all I have for the report. Go girls volleyball.
Great. So Steve?
No, I have nothing to report tonight.
Kristin?
Nothing, nothing tonight.
Raghu Nandan?
Nothing tonight.
And we'll come to the building update after in a moment. I just want to wish everyone a safe and happy break with family and friends, since we will not see you until after Thanksgiving break. Okay, we're going to move right along to the building update. Steve Durett?
Thank you. I don't have much to say tonight, but one of the things that, that has been bugging me for a long time is the fact that we are charged by National Grid, what's called a demand charge, and the demand charge is when energy is delivered by National Grid to the failed school. We have to pay for that separate from the electricity that, that we generate. And so from the point of view of, is there a way, given the fact that we have a net positive energy supply based on solar, and the fact that we've reduced the electricity footprint for the school by virtue of the high-efficiency lights as well as the geothermal system, that the designer of the original system, I asked them to see if there was a way that we could come up with a proposal to use battery storage so that we can eliminate the demand charge and therefore garner the entire amount of money that would be due us based on the energy that we generate. So I received a proposal, which I have distributed to the School Committee to review, and hopefully we can bring that up at the next meeting to consider. As I mentioned earlier, our demand charge ranges between three thousand and sixteen hundred dollars a month, and it will be on the larger side during the winter. This proposal to figure out the feasibility of supplying battery storage to meet the demand charge or eliminate the demand that the school has is roughly, well, it's actually nine thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is, I think sufficiently small to see what the feasibility of such a design would be. So we'll talk about that, I hope, at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to citizens' requests. Is there anyone here this evening, tonight, that wishes to make a statement to the School Committee? I'm just going to read through the policy as a reminder. We have a policy regarding citizens' requests. Some important pieces of this policy include that you must be a resident, current resident of Westboro. Speakers are allowed to adjust the School Committee about issues within the School Committee's purview, Westboro School District Policy or Budget or some examples. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the School Committee. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the Presiding Chair before or after the meeting. You are welcome to hand me additional comments in writing now or send them via email, and I will share them with the other School Committee members. Public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the School Committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the School Committee's authority. Our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us tonight. Clapping, cheering, calling out, or any other noise following a speaker is not allowed. A reminder that if not following the policy, this may cut into your time. Additionally, I want to remind my members of the School Committee that when making a point of order, please address your concern to the Chair initially rather than to the Speaker. Okay. Name and address, just for the record.
Wolford Savoy, 41 Chestnut Street. Two wives I just wanted to mention briefly. My granddaughter is a freshman in the high school, and just for the curiosity's sake, I measured her backpack the other night. And with no lockers in this, being used or given to the students, her backpack weighs nineteen pounds, with the Chromebook and the textbooks and the notebooks. So I think we ought to look at the physical well-being as well as the social, emotional well-being of students in this particular case, so I bring that to your attention. Thank you. And a little ahead of schedule here, but I'm looking forward and hopeful that in the budget presentation that we're going to see salary accounts by major functions. I had requested this last April, and I'm hopeful tonight that I will see some of that in the interest of transparency, since salaries represent about over eighty-three percent, at least last year, of the total budget. I think we should have a breakdown of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for citizens' requests? Okay. Well, we're going to move right along to, we're looking at the maximum limits for student activity checking accounts and to approve clubs and activities accounts for FY '23. So Dave, do you want to walk us through that?
Sure. The first attachment you will be seeing is our student activity account annual authorization. This is, this is a way for us to close to basically show the bank balance at the end of the fiscal year and to have the School Committee authorize that the limits remain static and that there's no changes on the limit. This is a request from the auditors, also mass general law, but it is an initial effort in transparency add to student activity budgets. You'll see that the balance at the bottom is forty-three thousand. That balance can change based on activities and events. So over the last several years, it's been various due to the pandemic and things of that nature. However, these memorandums are pretty consistent, and they're really, again, just to reiterate, what they do is provide end-of-year balance and the authorized limit from the School Committee. There's, in general, it's, it's just a memorandum for an update. Really no actionable items other than for your approval that the authorized limit remains static.
I'd move that we authorize the limits as shown on the, on this table, and...
I have a question.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all right. Now's the time.
Wait, so I'll, I'm going to second, and then we'll have a discussion. So I will second Steve's motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
So is this for clubs and?
Yes, generally, yes.
Yeah, all the, all the clubs. So I would like to propose a reward to the clubs, to the clubs themselves. If they win any kind of competition, local, state, nationwide, I'd like to propose some kind of a reward so that the kids get, you know. It's, it's one thing to participate, but it's also good to, for them to do better. Kind of give them some kind of a reward to the club.
Sure.
So, and you and I have had a little bit of conversation around this. I think that, one, I think, I think we should have a just follow-up conversation with more specificity about what we'd be trying to achieve. I would need to, again, that's building-based. I feel like I would try to leave that as a building-based management. We'd have no idea what they're doing for celebratory moments across a whole range of clubs, and they have a bunch of practices. Some are competitive, some aren't, some have competitions, but it's such a wide, hundreds and hundreds of clubs. This particular approval is for the building-based student accounts that relate to very small opportunities related to more individual things, like the student, student council, like when they do a fundraiser, there's a cap. That's what the high school one is. So this particular fund relates to when they have a standing account where they've sold magazines or that they use for building-based types of things.
Yes.
So this is a standing audit. You want to make sure we're auditing these carefully. The auditors always look at them, and they're capped at expenditures so that they can't accrue too much money. So I think approving this would finalize this particular piece of work, and I'd be happy to then, I think it would feel appropriate to maybe when we talk about clubs, when I do the stipend memo, last year I did a much more extensive report there. I'd be happy to expand kind of a, you know, an opportunity to get more information around the range of things we do with clubs, so you can have a picture of where we might want to enhance it and what we could make available. So, I mean, it seems like the appropriate place to put that.
I had a quick question, and that was, if the account balances were that last year, were those the, was it five, 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 twenty?
Yes, they've, they've been static since I've been here, but at a hundred grand total, a hundred thousand dollars total. Yep, those, those balances, those limits have remained static since I've been here. Yep.
We had this huge discussion about this at some point with Irene a couple of years ago of whether, of why they were so shifty. And it's shifty in the sense that cash goes up and down based on expenses at the time.
Yep.
Yep, it made sense.
I was just going to add that like if a club is tied to like an overarching organization, like Best Buddies, DECA, High School Democrats, things like that, a lot of the time, the overarching organization themselves will provide some kind of reward stipend or recognition of some sort from their end. So normally, clubs that are tied to that level of competition per se or service, well, it normally gets taken through whatever organization they're tied to.
So you can be on my subcommittee. It'll be great. Thanks.
Be careful. Whatever you ask for might happen. Yeah, some years ago, I was asked by the School Committee to write a report on all this stuff because at the time, we were pretty flush in these accounts and almost were at maximum, many of them. And the Finance Committee had asked, in effect, to, in effect, reduce those accounts for the purposes of returning funds to the General Fund of the Town. And I can't remember who actually votes to set the, the limit, but I think it's authorized by general law under each one of these categories, number one. And, and number two, the reason why they're static is because I believe that's the driver behind them. I also believe, based on my memory, that the expenditures out of these accounts are actually handled by the, the principals at each school for them. They have a checking account that draws on these, and that, in effect, based on their judgment, whether the expense being funded, if you will, is, is authorized by the principal in the school. So at issue, if you will, what's the money used for? It's used to support each one of these programs. And the funds come in based on, as was discussed, revenue raised by the students for that purpose or based on activity fees and, and the like. So generally, the funds in these accounts don't originate from the taxpayer. They originate from efforts of the students and the funds that are paid into them by virtue of parents' fees, et cetera. So it's, it's a pretty closed process.
Yep, and the only additive which Superintendent Bach mentioned was they are audited by the business of us every, every year, and then they are submitted as part of our overall audit to the, to our independent audit firm.
Yep. So another quick question. Last year, did we carry hundred thousand dollars and forty-three thousand dollars is the balance from?
No, last, last year's ending balance was seventy-seven thousand. And, but the, the account, the authorized limit of all accounts was a hundred thousand. A hundred thousand has not changed. The, the balances at the end of the year can fluctuate depending on the significance of the amount of activities that happen at each location.
Income was not so good last year, I think is the point.
Well, I think a lot of these, what happened was they got so high. A lot of them are field trip, like you collect money for a field trip, and then the field trip doesn't happen, and the money is there waiting for the next time.
I mean, there's a multiple, the multiple variants that could happen from year to year.
So again, I think the limit is, the purpose is so that you don't keep on building funds and not use it for the purposes that the money was paid.
Correct.
So we're going to take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
That's five to zero, five being present, and that passes, and we'll move right on to your next thing, Dave?
Sure, thank you. This right here, as you can see, there's multiple tabs on this. This is actually just to identify to the School Committee the clubs that we are currently using this year at each location. And this, again, this is part of mass general law. This is part of our audit process where it's going to submit this. And this, this documentation is to display to the School Committee and to the public of the clubs that at we, at the time, we are currently aware of that are running.
So these were, just to enhance kind of the backup on this, we did present these. You get them attached to, annually to the stipend list when I do that, that report in the spring. But because they want a record of just the clubs, it's just better to double down and make sure you have it in your minutes and somebody doesn't neglect seeing it with regard to the memo. So it just allows for, it's like you're, you're ending up voting twice. You've already approved these clubs. You approved them last year at the close of the year when we did the stipend memo, but we want it on the record to the fall of this year, so it's just there for the auditors. So any changes to this is what you will see when we come before you with that stipend memo in the spring. So this is just the running list of the clubs that you approved last year.
I don't really recall the elementary schools, so...
Those are standing clubs that have run and are available to run should they ever want to, but this is just the master list, so you see them.
And are some of these things paid for by parent groups? Or is it really just stipend clubs? That was my only question about this.
Just the stipend clubs.
Okay. Am I confused by that with the elementary schools?
That first tab, I didn't want to prove that, that the lost book, that's not a club.
Well, yeah, I say, I mean...
Want to go back to us?
Yes, please.
We don't, we don't approve that. That's, 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 those are accounts for activities.
Yeah, my apologies on this, on this one. This one is, there's a few that should not be in this list.
Okay, yeah.
But yes, those are, that, a handful of those are not clubs. The lost book is not a club, per se.
It's an expense item.
Yes. My apologies on that.
I assume they were accounts.
Yes, yes.
But I was like, are they stipend accounts?
Yep, I can update. Yep, I can update the list.
So the question is, do we have a motion to approve the amended, or should I call it the amended, clubs?
Yeah, that list you're looking at now is the proper list that he's showing you.
That one, right. So actually, everyone looking at that one? Do we have a motion to vote to approve the clubs and activities accounts for FY '23, which is that list?
So move.
Right.
Second.
And I would just keep as reviewed in the spring stipend memo, so that it's in the minutes as well, please? Because that's a clean list as well, attached to the formal memo. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just, I just had a question. So like, so we're approving this list that's on right now? So like, it had things like math department and stuff written on it. Is that also considered?
That's a complete stipend list as they run, inclusive of clubs and stipends. So, so the, the, and, and a club might be approved to run, and it might run or not run from year to year, and then there's also new lists of clubs that come in. So when I do the stipend memo in the spring, you'll see that again, and you'll get a chance to approve and review those clubs.
I think the yearbook or the annual book for each school tells you how a club is created, how it gets money. And, you know, whether it gets money is dependent upon how many kids are in it, et cetera, et cetera, how long it's been there, so on, in part because we don't have, let's say, a supervisor for every club that's created, nor does every club have money in the first couple of years, so. But again, the process of how a club is created is in the, in the school book.
Yeah, and, and the, and again, you always vote any changes to those. You see those annually, and we'll make sure these lists match, so.
And there is a subcommittee also for the stipend and clubs list that...
that, uh, Kristen Vincent is on. So she meets with other members of the high school and middle school to review the process and any clubs coming in and out of being. You know, some will go away.
Of which there are hundreds, yes.
So, okay, so do we have, oh, we're, oh, a motion? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero, five being present. That passes. And we'll move right along to our budget presentation.
Volleyball update, it's two to zero.
That's important. The volleyball update, it's two to zero and sets.
All right, that'll, that's a good focus for us. Do you want to pull up the next presentation?
Thank you.
All right, um, so as we did at our last meeting, um, Dave and I will present, uh, budget number three. Um, and as you see, there's a quick turnaround. Steps one, two, and three, budget two, three, and four to final recommendation are barely a week apart. So, um, with Thanksgiving in there as well, it feels like a lot, it feels like two full weeks, except that I would like to have Thanksgiving as well, and so with Dave, and so everyone in the office will be not there. So it really tightens the window and it just, I think it's important for people to realize how rapidly we are trying to crunch numbers on a budget we just opened. And, um, it's no small feat that it's, you know, November and we're staging a budget that will run almost a year from now. So again, I think, uh, we're making good progress. And I, tonight's presentation is the shortest leap between content. And then the next one is a big leap where we look at all the cost centers against final percentages and a final recommendation. So, um, to some of the, to, again, you'll see more of the major function areas all presented in the next presentation. We're not gonna present those until we have all the calculations done on those, on the salary pieces. So what we're gonna do tonight is Dave and I are gonna review timeline and goals. You've just heard a brief intro about how the timeline is tight. Um, we're gonna look at a little bit of the history. It's just important that you stay centered in twenty-three, the budget we're in right now. The framework off of which we kind of do some zero-based budgeting, some cutting, some changing, of which FY twenty-four emerges from a lot of those components. Uh, we're gonna outline the known budget impacts that we can actually make some preliminary decisions on right now, such as transportation, which we looked at in a raw number last time in terms of, I think it was like seven percent rollover and we now have a number we think we're gonna carry forward that we'll talk through. We'll review requests submitted, the tiered, everybody put in all their requests. You'll see those tiered out in recommendations that we think preliminarily kind of primary decisions. And then we'll outline next steps. All right? So timeline, you can see where you are tonight. And then we're, we're working on scheduling the finance liaison. We roll those dates historically like within the next couple of days after we meet, but we've had some trouble kind of getting scheduled. Andrew has taken point on pulling together two organized structured sit downs with FinCom so that Dave and I can meet with them and one of, uh, the school community members can join us. Uh, and so, once we have those dates, we'll coordinate and whoever can sit in with us just to kind of participate, if you'd like, would be important. It's just answering questions and looking at the details we've covered thus far. So when I get those new dates, I'll email you. Those are subcommittee discussions. So they're not, you know, one, they're not dates that everyone needs, but ones that we need in terms of who has to sit down. From there, you see you hit, uh, Thanksgiving and then we come back and we do final recommendations. And you have two weeks of discussion available before your final vote. Okay? We really do, I just wanna look at the word process. It's just takes so much time to really process all the cost centers, to be looking at potential impacts. And last week, we spent a lot of time talking about the fourteen percent overlay on, uh, finance, uh, impacts for buildings and grounds, many of those costs, as well as special education and other supplies in general. Um, and then we looked at how we can be strategic in that and we'll look at some of that tonight. So moving into twenty-three, you wanna pick it up from here?
Sure. Um, so, uh, as we did at last presentation, the box on the left side, uh, is just to, um, I guess reiterate and discuss with you, um, some of the budget history that has taken place, um, you know, prior, prior to me coming aboard, but at the same time, um, it's relevant. Um, as you can see, I've added two, uh, call, two, um, two bullet points at the bottom, which was our annual town meeting approval of five point five seven on that increase. And then, um, as of recent, as of the ten seventeen twenty-three meeting for the special town meeting for the additional appropriation due to the special ed, uh, added district. Uh, the chart on the right is basically just updated numbers, so you can see how they reflect. Um, specifically, I would just call out your attention to athletics and transportation from the bottom. Those, those were the, um, approved increases as of last year. And then the updated number related to special ed tuitions.
And there's an interesting overlay there. So when you look at the special ed tuitions, um, there's two numbers that make up that increase and they're ones that you'll recognize on the next slide. Um, you'll see, I'll actually go forward. Where's the next slide? There. Um, you notice that, well, backup, sorry, I'm sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, last year, when we, when we went through the circuit breaker slide, you see that there was the six hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred gap. That became part of our budgeting. And when you combine that with the next slide, which was the additional funds we went back to town meeting for based upon out of district placements, you see that one million two hundred. It's basically those two numbers. So you basically see that combined increase. One, the first stage of which, that six hundred thousand was approved within the budget fold last year. And then when you see it in the line item, it's because you see the additional funding. As a, as a point of reference, I attended a superintendent's conference today and talked to, in the group of fifteen, four other districts who are over a million dollars in debt on out of district placements this year. Exactly the same circumstance and struggling with the increasing cost and the increase in out of district placements. And everyone was discussing just some of the compounded outcomes from transitions back from COVID and feeling like they're moving back into a more stabilized place now. So, but just, so you don't feel an anomaly. We feel like it is an anomaly in terms of how, that it shouldn't replicate itself, but it isn't an anomaly in terms of Westboro, so I just wanted to point that out. So let's look at twenty-four and where we are. So that kind of frames, you know, your numbers. When we, when we came together last time, Dave did a really nice job to discuss the overlay of the out of district, um, and the determinations around inflationary costs of, of potentially carrying fourteen percent for out of district costs, transportation, service and supplies as to be anticipated against a lot of the vendors that, uh, public schools are working with. So you have then those cost escalations as a, basically a framework of this, um, budget. You then have the other big piece, which is our current contract negotiation with all of our major units. So those are basically the two big drivers in, in this budget.
Amber?
Go back.
Could you go back to that slide?
Yes.
Uh, I, I think it's important that we discuss the note at the bottom of the, of the sheet. Uh, particularly has been set at fourteen percent. I think you should discuss who sets that and why it is that big.
Sure, I, um, the rationale for the inclusion of that, uh, note at the bottom, um, Superintendent Bach, um, received a memorandum, um, that she wished, that she had shared, describing.
She did, she did. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yes.
It's the state that set that.
Yes, so it basically, um, it has a multi, a plethora of, uh, questions with short responses, um, all of which was too big, I'm sure we could provide it. Um, but I wanted to highlight what I thought was the critical question as to what is the driver? What creates this fourteen percent? So that's why I decided to include that comment, because I thought for, um, constituents to see what that fourteen percent has derived of, uh, I think Raghu had some questions last, last time, so I wanted to include that. Um, just to, to read it, it's an estimate of inflation for the fourteen percent. It consists of two components. That's one point five, one, I'm sorry, five point one eight percent. Uh, that's the cost of living adjustment. And the eight point eight two is a workforce stability factor. And I think based on the memorandum and what's been heard is that essentially is the driver of the econ, economic impact of, um, stability or in, or lack of stability related to workforce. Um, so the, the combination of the two is the fourteen percent.
Yeah, and I'm only bringing it up because there's nothing we can do about that, whether it be our school district or anybody else's.
Absolutely.
It's the operational services division, which is a state agency.
Abs, absolutely. So OSD is the operational state division, um, that, that drives this. And, uh, as Mr. Durant and, uh, Mr. Adon had said, um, we are not isolated by this impact. This is statewide. Um, all school districts will be budgeting in different perspectives and different ap, apertudes of how to best incorporate a fourteen percent increase. Um, so as Amber mentioned at the beginning, uh, a lot of zero-based budgeting would be conducive to this process. Um, however, um, it's, it's such an impactful number that a strategy to offset it is ongoing.
Thank you.
There's a lot of discussion going on across districts about this and a lot of lobbying. I just shared this so that you could see. This is the fact sheet that I forwarded to you that had come out that looks at, uh, we can put it into the record for, for the, the packet. Um, you can see the operational services division that, that Dave was just highlighting and who they are and what their authority is and who they impact in the range of, um, services that they relate to. So again, a very, um, really relevant intense conversation taking on across districts right now. So I, I will, uh, put that into the packet for you, so you have it as part of the record and Jen can, can have it as well. Um, sure. So if you hop back over to our presentation, just hopping around. Um, so from here, we have basically the status leading into your final numbers. Looking at FY twenty-four, we're gonna be looking to respond to these major areas. Special education, which we've been discussing a lot of, and what, what, uh, what, we're gonna see more about that in the slides coming up. Technology, increasing costs, and, and John has some rollover for infrastructure, wireless and things that he needs to complete that need to be part of his budget increase. And again, then there's that, some of that cost escalation set on top of that need. And, um, as he looks at vendors and contracts and then, um, facilities and then the, the salaries and the contracts. Again, we're staying in a very collaborative focus. We talk about that all the time and we look forward to kind of ongoing discussion with everybody. So, there you go.
So, uh, this slide right here is, uh, a, a sum, a summation of, a summary of what, um, special ed will likely look like for next year. I proposed two, two boxes because I wanted to, I'll walk you through them. Um, student services as a whole, they're, um, the entire inclusive budget of student services is the three point three million at the top. If you increase by that OSD inflation of fourteen percent, it's an increase of about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that would then drive the, uh, student service budget, the entire budget up to three seven, seven four. The lower box actually displays what student services is from, again, the, the, the entire special education budget. The fourteen percent though is actually gonna be only driven on our collaborative and our added district tuition, where the number is the three hundred and eighty-one, bringing the total of the special education budget, depending on the route we choose to three six. The, the variance is eighty-six thousand dollars, give or take. So, I mean, Amber, myself, uh, Sherry Stevens, um, are, are reviewing what, you know, how we want to apply it because it's so, so impactful. Um, I thought it was a good opportunity to share for you, you know, what it would look like for an, an impact to the entire special education versus, entire special education budget versus just our two lines of added district, which is collaborative and added districts. Um, that's, that's the kind of summary of it. Um, I don't know if there's any additional questions, but I really wanted you to have kind of a scope as to the impact because it's, it's significant.
And we have more slides on it as we get further in, so, um.
I guess the, hello? I, I guess the one question that, as you're going through, what is the impact of the eighty-six thousand? On special services?
I mean, on a sixty million dollar budget, um, is, is minor. It's, you know, it, it, it all plays a role, but I mean, at, at, at the same time with, at least my philosophy is, um, you know, that's further discussion with, uh, Dr. Stevens. But at the same time, um, someone that has a student-centric philosophy like me, it, it's not at the liberty of potential lack of service, um, for doing it to the entire budget versus just the two lines to cover us per se for what we know is the added, potential added district cost. Um, my current, my current recommendation would be to, um, in the case of special education, is to, um, blanket the entire budget for the forty percent, considering that, that difference is negligible.
So, but this is the difference between where we are now versus where we end up at a final recommendation. And every penny and dollar and piece adds up to percentages that we make decisions on. So we show you all the potentials fully and transparently so that you can see the progression of where we end up. Um, so for now, you can see what would happen if we applied it to just the out of district and collaborative versus the whole budget.
Is there any reason why we would think that the collaborative won't see the same increase based on services that, uh, that they have to contract for?
Yeah, we did apply it to them as well. So we considered them part of.
Yeah, so the, yeah, so the added district, uh, that, um, that two point seven number is collaborative and private tuition.
So it's both. You're right. They would, they will definitely see the same.
Yep. Yep.
They'll get pushed back from their board about it, but, um.
I had, I had a question about, um, I forget, I forget what it was exactly, but we were, there were six proposals we reviewed in a different school committee meeting. I think it might have been from MASC. And one of them was concerning like the out of district placement for special education. So how would that impact, like, the amount of money we're spending here?
The amount of money, how would that impact the amount of money we're spending here?
Yeah, so like moving forward, but if we have more students that are coming in that need to go out of district, um, how would that proposal, I guess, that we were reviewing?
Impact would be greater. I mean, right now, we're figuring on those people that we know and where they go and what it costs. If there were new, new students that came in and needed additional services and they were out of district, then this number would get bigger.
And you'll see a little bit when we go through this, but, um, what, what we're doing to cover for that. You're also, to your point, um, the additional students that we went back for funding for are now folded into these numbers. So when we went back to the town and we said, okay, these are students that have gone out, the town awarded us the additional six hundred thousand to cover them this year. And then we build the tuition budget based upon those students inclusive in next year.
Okay.
So you're always rolling, just like we roll you forward year over year until you graduate, right? And so we, we, we have moved you all the way through. And so similarly, every child that comes to us, you're watching them in their trajectory as they roll through the district. And so, um, that's been built into these numbers as of now. That's a good question. Um, all right, so we, again, we're looking at the big cost centers where you're seeing some number changes and you'll see then some recommendations. We're recommending right now that you'll, that we will maintain the update to the Wi-Fi system and maintenance of, of effort there at a hundred thousand so that he can move to a new company, update the Wi-Fi. That's, you know, that becomes like all the hubs, all the rollovers. It's a substantial amount of contracted and, um, infrastructure work. In some cases, if he can keep the hubs and just change the contract, but then some of them, the contract comes with the hubs. And so John's the expert on all of that. He rolls that together into proposal that he forwards and then gives us the numbers to work with. Um, you see he's beginning a rotation of interactive projectors. We've always just kept a portion of his budget that he rolls forward for that. So he keeps basically the technology in line with what is updated at fails so that you end up like as technologies upgrade, he upgrades the quality of, of technology over time. Um, again, we have IT support that we're trying to manage in a competitive market and pay necessarily to keep people so that we don't have this constant turnover in our IT people. And, um, you're looking at increases again to the service of just cost of items. So John's budget, when you see that in a line item, you'll see a total in the other slides, um, are carrying those components of, of need. John, as we've called out a couple of times, does a beautiful job to rotate his budget. You know, I can go back to him and Dave could go to him and say, pull a hundred laptops out of your rotation for next year. What would your budget look like? And he can give you the number. He's, he's got it down really, really tight. So his numbers are always, um, exceptional. So his numbers are always exceptionally on point.
This, yeah, sure.
Take this big money slide.
This slide right here basically, basically, in short, to represent our facilities, buildings and grounds budget. As Amber has pointed out in previous presentations, some of the reductions to the facilities budget. Electricity, the general core number was reduced by a certain amount in FY, I believe, twenty-one and twenty-two. And obviously indicative of the OSD increase, we worked with Bob and Kelly to do a little bit of expense analysis related to what their budgets need to be cognizant of the OSD increases also, but based on the past expenditures. So these are the current recommendations, and I just want to kind of highlight the word current. Superintendent Bach, myself, Bob, Kelly are currently continuing to analyze, assess and research kind of the expenditures for each of these over the last several years. We're looking at trends, we're looking at models, we're basically trying to find some of the potential anomalies that occurred over last years that we can either remove or hopefully reduce based on incidents. So we are continuing to take an in-depth look at facilities and that will be one of our largest tasks over the next two weeks. The box on the right basically summarizes everything that we talked about, was that building and ground was cut over several years. Obviously, we're cognizant of a fifty percent increase related to heating. That is what's been locked. Working with the town and the town CFO, we were basically given the advice to increase electricity thirty percent. You'll see that in the chart. And then as we continue to deep dive this budget, we are looking at some of the plumbing, grounds cost, general repairs, obviously the aging of the buildings and cost to have an increase to that, you know, supply issues and inflation overall. So if there's a slide that I'd like to highlight, this is one of them, is that this is one that's going to continue to evolve in that we will provide rationales for each kind of reduction or potential, hopefully not increase if that is the case per line item.
So when you look, for example, just, we're going to spend some time on this slide. The electricity alone is two hundred thousand. So, you know, the six hundred and forty-three feels big and is. But two hundred thousand of that is just the lock-in at the new electrical costs. And, you know, we've struggled to find ways to cut those down further. And that will be an area we'll be continuing to work on with our green initiative work. The fuel costs you see, the areas where we're going to be going in and looking, we're looking currently at, I mean, taking, I actually basically asked Bob and Kelly to sit down and talk with us about any of the overages over seventeen percent. So, you know, we're going to be looking at each of them. Like I know the trash, it says a hundred and thirteen, but that's only thirty thousand dollars across six schools, five days a week, actually seven days a week really, you know, and the escalation in those costs. We actually cut trash for the last two years. So it kind of came back and bit us. I'm not surprised that we see that cost escalation because we had reduced that in the last budget. It was part of that sixty-one thousand dollar cut. You'll see when you look at, as we kind of scan down the list, again, like the one forty-four for building, maintenance and equipment, we'll pull that number apart and look at it. We had had, we did not have an electrician all of last year and we had previously. And the escalation in cost of contracted services for electrical work was extensive. We should see an ability to kind of push on the numbers that they used for their projections around that as an example and make some reductions there. So this is, this is the arena, and again, we've always shown you the current requested lists from departments if there's substantive changes. So this is one of those. These are not, this is not the final number. But you're going to want to be able to know what they requested and where we end up at full transparency. So when we come back, the slides will show what those reductions are and why or additions or reallocations. Okay?
So my understanding is equipment maintenance, that huge rise is because the contractors are charging that much more?
Yeah, and yes, because of increased costs of, I mean, this is, this pays for everything we, every blade of grass we cut, every, you know, snow shoveling, all the everything, the toilet paper, like everything. It's all of our supplies as well as contracted services and the contracted services have escalated as well as materials costs. And we've also reduced or level funded this budget for multiple years. And so the escalation, when you actually do an update, you know, kind of jumps.
That's the thing I would like to see, is which areas had we rolled over and passed? Just because it will make, I mean, a hundred and thirteen percent in trash makes sense because I know we cut that.
Yeah, we can show you, yeah, we'll put that in the rationale slides, like where the sixty-one thousand dollar cut came against the other. So that you can see if it led to larger bounce backs when they then came in. And I would say the answer generally is yes in most cases, but not necessarily at the leap in the high school one. I got to look at that one. But the high school's a big busy beast and so, you know, there's a lot of moving parts there. So it's not surprising to me that it's, you know, I think, I don't think it'll stay at a hundred thousand though. I know it won't stay a hundred thousand. So, you know, but where we land will be what we're trying to figure out right now. Any questions around this one? Okay, let's keep moving.
Great slide, by the way.
Oh, thanks.
It's very transparent. It says we've got some serious needs going on there.
So from here, the next major area, don't we do these?
Yeah.
Okay. So the work that, while Dave is working on rolling all of the cost centers, we kind of divide and conquer, then I'm looking at ways to take the requests and have conversations around how to either wait on them, decline them, or move them into the budget reasonably. And so this is the night when I make recommendations back to you and tell you where I think I'm going to be with regard to the list we received. It was a very small list this year, but numbers add up. So I just want to take a look at those with you. Again, number one, two green items here around FTE. The funding for the athletic, additional athletic training support was approved last year. We could not fill it. We're looking to leverage it differently and hopefully get someone through the posting. We will fund that. We will do it through student activity accounts, which was how we had planned to fund it last year as well. So it came back as another budget proposal and we just are echoing that we will maintain that as an opportunity. I think it was in for less money before, so we're dedicating some more money to it and hopefully, like we thought we could do it as contracted services. I think it was twenty-five thousand dollars when we looked at it before. We're now, you know, committing a larger percentage so that we can hopefully get someone who's actually willing to work for us part-time. We just can't find anyone. And then Armstrong, you had the student service nurse. So there's a, I have some backup on this, which I'll show you on the next two slides. I think our nursing services are stable and should be maintained at the numbers we have, and I'll show you the rationale for that. We will maintain it on a grant. I'm not sure which grant we're going to shift it to, potentially the IDEA grant. The grant it's on will end and we will need to reallocate it. Sherri Stevens believes she can, you know, as long as she plans ahead, try to carry it on one of her grants. And we'll look at the backup slides on those in a minute. And you can see that for the reading position that for now I'm holding.
I wanted to ask, I'm sorry, but, so you mentioned at the last meeting that the state now requires the athletic trainer to like travel with every single meet. So how many athletic trainers would we have at the school or want to have at the school?
I mean, typically, you would have one that would stay on site if there were active games that day that require that you have someone. And then if there's traveling, and again, I, the detail around, you know, who they have to travel with. Like they have to travel with football, they have to travel with basketball, like they have to travel with those teams. You'd still sometimes be lacking coverage. So one of the big things that the athletic directors are always doing is calling each other. I think, you know, the active infrastructure so that they can make sure that all the games are covered, that there's athletic trainers at all the games. And even if quote districts are out of compliance because they don't bring their own, we know that we have some athletic trainer coverage at every, it might be the away one as opposed to the, the home person going with us. So even with adding a second person, we would have some uncovered travel teams because it's just busy.
And you said that there's certain sports that they're like required to go with?
Well, it depends on, I'd have, I mean, I don't want to get in the weeds on it. I would have to have Johanna present like what the balance is of number of students and when you have to have two, like there's guidelines. And they're getting, they've actually gone back to the MIAA to push on this requirement. And they're hoping to get it modified because right now, most, most school districts consider it kind of an unfunded mandate in the sense that they can't find people. And even then, it's, you know, it's a cost that a lot of districts don't even have one. So a lot of districts don't maintain a full-time athletic trainer. They use volunteers or they rely on the visiting team to bring someone. So again, like we're in better compliance than a lot of places. But the MIAA, I think, I talked to Brian the other day when I was discussing this along with Johanna, and they're anticipating hopefully a modification of this. So go back just one second. Okay, no, you've got it. Go on, you can flip, sorry. So here, looking at the nursing justification, it follows the safe student nursing ratios, which are Department of Public Health standards and high school standards. Looking at Mill Pond and the high school in particular, they need two people based upon their numbers. We'll look at that in a minute. And you see really an extensive, and we've talked about this before, a couple of years ago when we added a nurse leader, that the intensive, the intensiveness of health needs across our schools, you know, is much more complex than, than years before and requires really competent, solid, full-time nursing. If you look to the next slide, you see those numbers. So by maintaining the other nurse on the grant, we basically maintain this staffing allocation, which I think is appropriate, which is two at the high school. And you can see we're within striking district of the guidelines. One at the Gibbons, two at Mill Pond, and we're a little over on those guidelines. But it's a heavy traffic office because of the age group. It's probably our busiest nurses' office. And then you see the staffing appropriate one at each of the other schools. I think you can look at our ratios, our compliant with our comparative districts.
Sorry, I missed it. Which one is busiest?
Mill Pond. It's busy. Yeah. It takes longer service time with students. There's more of them. The age group is particularly both independent and dependent, right? Independent enough to ask to go to the nurse, young enough to then be dependent when they get there. So it's a whole kind of a spectrum of the intensity of the service delivery there versus high school. You might have some, you have a lower number of percentage of students who might need a longer-term care in terms of staying in the nurse's office and getting consult, whereas the others are much quicker turnover. When you have two nurses, you have someone who can shift to maybe a mental health, longer stay, sit and talk, give what they need, call home, whatever's necessary with focus, which you need at high school. And then the other nurse can do the walk-in service without interruption. So the rhythm of those service deliveries, I think, are working really well for us at the district level. Again, I, just the backup slide for you, which I already just discussed, and then we'll go into budget requests. So these were the requests for operation and management, you know, funding for things. And I can talk to you about, you know, how we anticipate moving forward on these. The girls' hockey expansion, we would anticipate doing for the first year startup from the revolving account or the student revolving account. Reasonable, we've done this with other teams where we use the student activity account to fund year one, see what our substantial starting rollover is, and then it gets built into the budget over time. Or it could live on the revolving account based upon how the student, that's what the student fees are for, offset to the overall impact of student activities. For startup, it's definitely makes sense and I think the number is doable. You have to pay for ice time. You have to, you know, add a coach in, you have to, you know, change up some of what you're doing. And she's already working, ice time has gotten very expensive. And then you have the district curriculum work for the science textbooks, the four-year contract that Daniel's currently negotiating, and the literacy consumables that are hovering at the sixty thousand. I've got a backup slide on that. And then I'm deferring on the other two. I'll work with Chris Martin and he'll work with, hopefully acquiring some student activity money from revolving and work with WAFIA and some budget money and we'll package that together to look at when he needs to get a piano. Again, looking at the two pieces that, you know, I wanted to provide that backup. You see the girls' hockey piece, really looking at, the Shrewsbury numbers are continuing to grow. We could literally get bumped out and not have a year of preparedness. They could opt out based upon their own need and we're kind of anchored as more of a visitor within their team. And as we've grown in our interest, kind of at a place where our own identity needs to emerge. Certainly, that's a Title IX, you know, goal for us as well to have equitably parallel programs. And you see the other rationale there. And then the curriculum needs, both essential, obviously, need to be expenditures that we complete and Daniel can answer any questions on those.
Do we know what the boys' hockey total is? So when you're looking at this, that you know that they're comparable or?
Well, it's not, they're parallel in the sense that relative costs, but like, for example, they might not carry as wide a game season in their first year. As you go independent, you have to build into the cycle. You might not have as much cost on uniforms. It depends on how many you're carrying, but every, all the cost centers are equitable across the, the planning. I mean, it's a substantial commitment for us to move into hosting our own team and we need to see that we can sustain it. So Johanna DeCarlo, the athletic director, did a lot of legwork to talk to our girl athletes interested in playing and to make sure she has a base feeder program enough that she can, that we can hopefully carry and sustain our own team. So then it's ice and new uniforms that say Westboro only, and then coaching.
So based on your answer, I'm going to assume that the boys is more. In other words, just because when we're looking at this, just to know that not is it just the right thing to do because of Title IX, but because it's the right thing to do to create equity across the board for.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we provided it, and I don't want to represent that being on a joint team isn't equitable. It certainly has served us very well and I think the girls that have played hockey there have had a very strong experience. Being on a collaborative team has other benefits, which have been really rich for us in terms of the experience of really partnering. And so they're just different experiences, okay? So I'm not offering one is better than not. I mean, I think that the girls that have played on the joint team over the last several years, we've done, have had a robust experience. This has to do with the growth of Shrewsbury's program, getting to a place where we could get closed out and not be ready. And it is appropriate then to have, to establish our own independent team because she thinks we can hold on to enough girls to do it.
Now is the team, now is the time to have our own identity.
It is, yeah, yeah.
What ice rink do they play on, the Shrewsbury joint team?
Not North Star. They go somewhere, I think they, they go over to another rink.
So to the extent that this now becomes a Westboro team, then they would be playing at North Star, correct?
I believe that's where Joe gets all their ice.
Yep, so, and I know that the times that the kids get to practice are really ungodly in terms of time a day. So this is, you know, obviously it'll, it'll acquire more ice time. So that's number one. And if I recall, hockey is the most expensive sport per student?
Hockey and football are your two most expensive. And again, like the, one of the things we'll do is, moving forward on this, we'll then, similarly to when we started the Gibbons football team, we did some, couple of years of preliminary, like Johanna and I have been talking about this for a while, watching the numbers, tracking it. And then she moved to an escalation of actually looking at a trajectory of could we have a group of people that could play, doing the legwork on it before it becomes a grounded proposal. And then from here, we'll make sure that we give you, you know, a structured update as we move forward to make sure you have a picture of the implementation of the team and the timeline and the schedule and stuff. And she'll fold it into an update that would like the one we provided around football when we moved in that direction. So you'll definitely, these are very early stages, and then you'll get a more kind of formal update along the way. And you can go see a game.
Historically, do we have the athletes pay for like their uniforms, jerseys? I don't know.
No, that's all part of their student activity fee and participation fee, so. All right, so let's move into where we are, moving toward a final budget recommendation. One of the other things that Dave does is he goes into the budget and talks through with me and everybody else, kind of figuring out where do we have opportunities for impact and offset. We always pull a two hundred thousand dollar offset for community ed for use of our buildings, electricity, custodial time, supplies, floor space. Historically, for years, when I got here, it was one. Historically, for years, when I got here, it was 150. The last couple of years, we bumped it up to 200. We maintain it at that level. They also then help us to pay at times around special requests for, say, a copier because they, so they'll might come in and offer like a specialized purchase, but the standard 200. We will anticipate right now that we should have a remaining 18,000 on the ESTER grant to use against expenditures for offsets of 24. Um, school choice, there's an account that will provide 100,000 towards offset in the budget um, to reduce impact. And then potentially, again, as we look at where we leverage keeping our number as tight as possible, potentially carrying two more FTE on the preschool tuitions. So those are the areas that you've, have, those are any additional pieces?
No, those are, as you mentioned, those are our offset accounts, you know, um, there's other grants and other revolving, but these are the, the larger ones that are, that are available. But again, we always can consider, uh, related to grants and, um, any external funds as to, you know, various, various rationales, um, duration of those external funds, total impact, um, and as I think we, Lisa and I, you and I discussed is that usually when something goes on a grant, what, what comes off? So always, uh, weighing the value of the trade-off versus the trade-on.
And we don't show, again, there's, there's, there's a proportional offset to a range of grants we use. We only show in the budget the ones where there's advantage for a change and where money, you know, money that we're putting against the development of this budget that, and we always show the community ed, but it is kind of a standing one. You could almost like pull it off the list, but it's just good for people to remember that we utilize that. Um, so transportation, Dave's been working a lot on this number.
So, uh, again, this is one of the other, other departments. Not to be exclusive of two departments, we're looking at the budget in all aspects, uh, especially with this OSD inflation. Transportation is one we wanted to highlight. Um, as I mentioned in the last meeting, the recommended CPI index, uh, which is the recommended increase due to, at the time, which is, again, it's preliminary as to what the, the recommendation would be to increase it. They're not going to be able to factor in actual gas and, in my, and, um, uh, fuel costs at, at the time. Um, so essentially this is their kind of, almost similar like an OSD enhancement, but it's just essentially what, uh, the contract states that the CPI index at the time should be. That amount is the 225, so they recommended the 7.3%, which brings us to a 3.3 million dollar budget. Um, Amber, myself, business office, Kathleen Lungarini, we're very much looking at transportation. All different aspects of it, historic expenditures, what it looks like, being cognizant, um, of, um, everything, you know, it's a soup to nuts thing, whether it's ridership, all types of things. We want to kind of pull this apart and look at our invoices as well. So we're in, we're doing an in-depth analysis on this as, as in-depth, if not deeper than we're doing at facilities. Um, as of right now, based on kind of our initial assessment of where to go with transportation, ensuring that we have, uh, a budget that can sustain, um, the inflation that we're impacting, but also what we're seeing in cost. Uh, we're estimating around a 3% increase, which would be about $92,000. So we're looking closer to a 3.1, uh, total budget line. Again, I, I think it's fair to say that this is a, a very initial assessment, but we're, you know, more than confident that it, we're going to land right around that 3%. But again, it's early and we continue to pull it apart.
All right, so you're starting to see some numbers solidify for us that we then roll into the big picture. Uh, this is always our most favorite slide of the year, other than the final percentage. There's two big numbers people like to see. When we really process circuit breaker and understand what that is, the allotment that it's provided by the state that comes to the school budget side. And probably the two, you want to step, what do you want to do? Do you want to do this one or you want me to?
You start now, yeah.
Okay, we're going to, we're tagging this one. So annually, again, we've always kept this slide the same because it really helps to consistently frame your picture because it's complex. You remember that there's always a lag time in circuit breaker. It's a year behind. So, um, we're going to start at the top and we're just going to go down slowly till we get to the bottom. We are anticipating that tuitions next year for collaboratives will cost the 267, 743. That's students currently in collaboratives rolling forward and what that cost would be. Then you see the out-of-district cost at 2,993, 418. You see that that number has gone down. We have a range of students that will be rotating out. And the cost impact then, again, is year to year. So this year, that number bumped up in a way that, you know, created shock and awe and deficits. And now we're at a place where we anticipate next year, that number would drop down. There's roughly 33 students anticipated right now. So you're going to get a little bit of a rotation out. That can change. You can also get five or six students in. So there's big swings in this number all the time. But for right now, we're going to always work off of a snapshot in time when we deal with this budget. This is as of 11:15. The number of students we have, we're going to budget against that known number. So there you see the total of tuitions to be paid for collaboratives and private. And then you have the actual circuit breaker claims that we put in last year.
Twenty-two.
For 22. Seventy-five percent of that, we get back 1,860. That's about $400,000 higher than last year. So we got a bump in circuit breaker because we had more students out. So when we got our funding cycle back in, we've seen it bump up. So that number is funding we have to work with. So you have the, then you go down to the, to the next line. You have the, you carry down the out-of-district cost. You carry, right now, as I'm carrying 400,000 for unanticipated out placements. And then you basically back out the circuit breaker cost and you get the amount needed for our general fund out of district. So that's the money we need to pay. Then you look down at the bottom and you see, okay, you also have to fold back in against that out-of-district, the collaborative. It's always a little bit confusing, but it's just because the chart of accounts separates out the collaborative because it's considered a public school versus the private school tuitions, and so they show them as two separate items. So you fold that number together and you get the total out-of-district cost as the 1,805, 10. And then you apply the general fund against that available to us. And you actually see that for the first time in my career, you do not have a circuit breaker gap. You actually have a circuit breaker bonus. So we are, we have funding that actually apply against the budget that is helpful. So I did the preliminary, you want, I applied the layman's approach to that.
No, I, no, I, um,
Do you want to fix that up?
No, I wouldn't actually amend her comments just because for, um, you know, people like Mr. Bachelor, I mean, I, I, my first, my perception is the way she walked through it, you could follow. The, the methodology and the math on it, um, the circuit breaker is confusing because it leaps years. So we're actually taking the impact of 22 and applying it to 24. But again, um, I have no additional comments unless there's, there's clarifying questions.
I think the bottom line is that we have a savings of that amount of money, so, to apply against other expenses.
Exactly.
Right, so, so that, um, typically, we have always, so, so let's just play this forward for a moment. Um, you see, and that's because you see circuit breaker went up because we had more students out, and then you see a window where we anticipate fewer, a few students rotating out. Now, that could also lead to the problematic structure where then more students go out and we aren't budgeted for them. So you can see that I am carrying unanticipated tuition and there's 400,000 that I applied to it. So I'm holding that for unanticipated tuitions of students that will go out that right now we're not carrying. So as of today, that is the preparatory number that I'm thinking of holding. It might change in my final recommendation based upon what Dave works through with all the salaries and everything. But I think knowing what we know about the trajectory, the volatility of the in and out of out-of-district placements, um, that you have this very concrete amount of budgeting for the known students that bit us this year. And so I'm maintaining, uh, unanticipated tuition of 400,000 available to pay against students that might go out or other cost billing we get. And then, um, we have the 928 that we can apply against other special education costs.
So the summary, the way I see it is, uh, we took advantage of the roller coaster, but next year, because of the savings, we're going to get whacked again. Because we're going to have a decrease in the number of students that are in the prior year. And therefore the funding will be less.
Well, well, next year it'll actually be, we have a lot of kids out now. So actually, next year's number will be higher because, because it's not till the following year when they rotate out.
Yes.
So yeah, at some point you're good.
The assumption is that more kids are going to come and our costs go up, but anyway, it is what it is and the process is what it is. And I guess we can just be thankful that in fact we have the savings.
I mean, the bottom line is, this is not the money we got for free.
That's, that's the other thing, yeah.
Well, again, you have to look at again, in, in the budget cycle, there's a conservative approach to maintain, again, it's, you know, we, we had a deficit of 600,000 and additional in that free, in those settlements with some of that free cash, um, request. So be well beyond, it was 900,000. I'm, you know, we consider it an anomaly, but anticipating that our number then went down, holding the 400 in my preliminary proposal to you tonight, again, this is still preliminary, is to make sure that we don't back ourselves into being in a place again where between now and the end of the year, we have more students that transition in a way or we get two move-ins and then we don't have that coverage. So as of now, that's the standing plan and approach. And I want to then show you how we step that forward into the next slide.
I think there's a couple of questions. Yeah, yeah, just one question. The, the 400K for the unanticipated tuition, what did you budget for last year?
I haven't carried, I didn't carry any.
Any, okay. And then in previous years, you?
However, remember, we always had the three months of prepay tuition allowable, which gave us a stabilization account, which was close to $800,000. Last year, we used that across the span of the year as students were placing out. And then we had no prepay moving forward, which was then zero coming into this year, which is why we then had to go back to the town for the actual budget of this year's implementation. So the stabilization fund, as we manage it, functioned like it should, which is the capacity have that prepay of three months of tuition gives you a buffer. And from there you can respond. And if you don't need it, it just moves forward year over year and sits there as kind of a stabilization, you know, of, of a chunk of, um, prepay months that help you cover costs. And then when you had to use it, you use it, which we did, and drained it all the way down to zero. Thus, we had like no funding coming into this year to then do the gap of the tuition, which is why we went back to the town.
So this is a budget line that you don't ordinarily?
In the past, my first three years here, maybe four, I'd have to look back at the past budgets, we used to hold out 100,000.
And then, we, as team players, we cut it during like COVID and that's when it sort of started to just go away. Even though?
It was strategic and certainly a shared process, just as going back to the town and getting their support was a shared process. So what I think is very important for people to realize is that you craft the budget year over year based upon the students you have. So, you know, that's where we are right now. The students we have will be used to build next year's budget. I'm transparently being clear that in this sustaining 400,000 of unanticipated tuition, the number's right there for everybody to see fully transparently, that that's what we would have available should we have other kids go out or tuition costs escalate. Um, you know, and we get it, we get more money requested of us. So I think for now, I feel good about that as a preliminary place to be. I want to take you to the next slide and look at where we are with that. So, okay, so then there's two areas where we're still doing work. Those are highlighted for you. And so I'm going to show you kind of the evolving budget by major cost areas outside of staff, which is the other thing that folds in it and then it combines to the whole budget. So you see in the operational costs there, a 2% increase on building-based budgets. They have been level funded multiple years. They are, uh, suffering many of the same increase in costs of all the things they're purchasing from all of their building supplies, everything they order, all their crayons and notebooks and tissues and all that comes out of their building-based budgets. Um, we've level funded those, gosh, I mean, multiple years. Um, so they would prefer much more than that, but we put 2% on those building-based budgets to just make sure that we aren't completely neglecting. They've been cutting, just like Johanna came back last year and said, look, everything's escalating. I need, you know, I need, uh, to see a modest increase and she, we added that $4,000 for her ref costs and contracted services. So there's 2% on currently, and again, this is current draft, 2% on those building district-wide budgets. Student services, now, um, you see a reduction.
No, that's, so what you're seeing in the student services is, and actually, it's, it's an increase that's, that's, what you're, what you're seeing, like, there's the entire student services budget. So that reflects to the top cell on the, on the special education tab.
Yep.
So that is not just inclusive of out-of-district, um, collaborative and private tuition. It is that number, that 3.3 is all a special education. So that actually applies a 14% to it. So again, as I mentioned, we're assessing that. That number has some variabilities based on two things. One, if we want to apply the 14% to just the two lines of collaborative and private or to the entire special education budget in addition to any further discussions related to circuit breaker.
Yep, thank you.
So if circuit breaker carries some offsets, they can be applied to that. Meaning that the ask for the special education budget for next year could come down based on, we'll have an offset of potentially what's coming from the circuit breaker. So that's why that's highlighted as, as, as a notable line item, as that it requires initial assessment and analysis. Fine arts is a 2%. The curriculum instruction staff, um, I'm sorry, excuse me, curriculum, that's curriculum and staff development. That's, if you, if you can recall back to the request sheet from, from Amber, um, that's Superintendent Daniel Mayer's request. So that would be his increase noted right there. That's a $60,000.
Right, and then you, that's the, uh, the textbook and the consumables for the pre-K to, uh, pre-K three, um, literacy program and then the middle school text.
The technology would be, as, as noted, John, uh, John's budget has taken some reductions and we've slowly grown it back, at least since my duration of being here, we tried to grow it back. Uh, but in discussion, as Amber mentioned earlier, John is actually, I don't want to use the term pretty, John is meticulous with his budget. Um, and the, the 14% right there actually was the OSD number based on what John said. John's actual number was actually, when he did his assessment, almost a zero-based budgeting, John's number was almost identical to that number. So as we, as I mentioned, or both, you know, we'll keep remembering, or keep mentioning, John is really great with his budgets. He has a good pulse on his vendors, inflation. So the OSD number at 14%, I think it was about 8,000, seven or eight thousand dollars off from John's initial assessment of what he might need. Athletics, um, we gave them a small increase last year. I think what we, uh, we'll continue to talk to, uh, Johanna about is her discretionary needs, but her position request will be coming out of student activities. So that's why that one's left blank. The school committee, that's you guys, uh, we can talk about, have further discussion as to increase it by 2% or leave it level funded, so that, just to further talk over the next two weeks. And then the transportation, that 92,000 is a 3% increase. Facilities, as I talked, as we talked about in depth, that's that 643,000 dollar increase. That is, um, the variable increases across, which would inclusive of 15% for heat, 30% electricity, and some of the line items that are across the board. So right now, we're looking at a 1.4 million dollar increase in the O and M side.
So the, to complement that, a couple of pieces, the ones I highlighted, that Dave and I highlighted are the arenas where we'll be doing more work. I mean, right now, you've seen we made a transportation recommendation at 3%. I don't think we can go lower on that and, and, you know, we would hold on. I don't think we can go lower on that, and, and, you know, we would hold on that. School committee, that is inclusive of legal fees, that's where that runs, and we've kind of been running along the higher side there, so Dave put 2% against it. I don't think we'll do more work on these other numbers. I just feel like those are the, as you think about what are the decisions that have been made, you know, yes, we're recommending the technology increase, yes, we're recommending the curriculum work and the 2% on the building budgets. Those numbers are starting to feel more fixed to me against we then leverage them with other, other decisions around what we can do with work with grants, and then we'll see where the salary number comes out. You basically roll those together and you're making your final presentation. This follows the exact trajectory of how we budget every year. You can go back to last year's presentation, it's an exact snapshot rollover process. We make transportation decisions first, we do facilities, we do the requests, and then we come forward with basically, they'll draw forward on the salaries, and we look at our total numbers. If there's ways where once we do that, we do other things that bring that number in a certain place, we'll highlight those during discussion. So now we'll complete those line items for salary, again, finalize buildings and grounds, special education, and develop a final recommendation. We will have a meeting with FinCom, probably two before you see final finishes.
Can I ask you a question? On the student services, special ed, I'm still having a hard time to understand what does it get us with applying 14% increase across versus just the out-of-school?
I think the best explanation would be is, for the student services budget, we can include a similar line item to that of facilities. So you can actually see each individual line item of student services as opposed to just, we've spent a lot of time highlighting collaboratives and the private, whereas there is, similar to facilities, there's a multitude of accounts that you should see, all of which, again, without having the sheet in front of me and having it, you know, the capability of being transparent, I can ensure either to submit that and ask Andrea to, or we can have it ready, prepared for you at the next meeting. But we can, I think that's just the next best step, because it's inclusive of almost all the account, it is inclusive of all the account and line items that Dr. Stevens uses as she does her budget.
And you've got contracted services, so you've got a lot of contracted services, you've got her legal fees are carried in there, and contracted services for some school psychologist additional support, like, for example, if we can't, if there's maternity leave and we can't get a psychologist, we use contracted services. Or where she'll get a psychologist from a service to come in and do some testing, as an example. We work with a range of consultants that come in that will also support program development. So again, all of that's escalated. So you would definitely, probably more surgically apply 14% to some arenas of that, just like we'll do with, with the, with the buildings and grounds work. I would think that contracted services will have to carry that higher percentage, but her supplies probably won't, which is a minimal amount when you see her actual line items. If you go back into last year's budget book, just flip to Sherri's page, and you're going to see that line item breakout. And then you're going to see we're basically rebuilding that number. So in your, if you want that deeper detail, it's in all of your last year's budget book. You're always going to find the breakout of all the salary categories, all of that. And then we're building those now, and when we present next week, you'll see them with more detail.
I have a quick question about the circuit breaker, the 528, which is really the 400,000 taken out, the leftover of that credit for circuit breaker? Am I reading that wrong, that it's a credit? On the circuit breaker page, which is the previous page?
So it's, again, it's not necessarily a credit. I think the way you want to, I mean, I guess, I think this is where I use layman's terms when I speak about it financially, Dave's probably cringing. The, that amount is funding to apply across the budget. Typically, for example, you've always seen us drop in the deficit and you have to apply, apply it against the total budget. We're going to take the available funds and drop it against the available sped budget and other funding sources. So it's, this is just the total of funding we have available currently. So we just haven't allocated it across, we haven't allocated across the total budget yet, so you can see, you know, it's benefited.
Nope, that's right.
I mean, the way I was looking at it, I was like, oh, there's the 14%, you know?
The OSD increase, so yes, we had the same thing. So, I mean, there's further discussion to be had as to what that, the significance and best way to manage that 900K.
Yeah.
At this point, I think there's multitude of options, and we'll, we'll discuss that, and we'll have, we'll provide, we can provide those options in transparency, so we can, you know, either provide you with what we'd like to go with, or give you some opportunity to kind of weigh in on the best way.
I mean, in a blanket sense, it's just going to offset, like, just take the money we just showed you. If you recommended moving forward with that, it's going to offset that as a total percent. So if you look to the other slide, you saw $1,493,000 of current funding that would be part of a total percentage, but we're going to layer that 900 against that, our overall budget, and you'll see kind of where we are. Because you have budget funds, sorry not to get into the weeds, but there's two things that make up that number. You have budgeted tuition money that we've carried in the sped budget and circuit breaker. Those two pieces of money make up that total. Because circuit breaker went up, we'll apply all of circuit breaker against tuitions, but it means that if you don't need tuition, but you read, just like you zero-based budget, you can reallocate budget funds to other arenas of your budget to make sure that you're leveraging those expenditures. You don't apply circuit breaker to other parts of your budget. Circuit breaker is used for tuition.
Yep.
So you fully expend circuit breaker always against your out-of-district. That's what that money is allocated for, that's all it can be used for. But if it covers more, like it's supposed to, then you can use your budget to go to other areas. So we need less tuition funds within the budget line item, it's going to shift over and help carry salaries or other costs. So you're seeing it right now, the way you've always seen it, and it's now going to allow us to basically drop some of the tuition funds that we've carried in budget and move them elsewhere. Does that make sense?
And then the only additional comment I would add is that I just want you to be mindful of, that is as of the 15th. So that is, I mean.
Yeah, this number could be totally different.
Exactly, I mean, the incident was yet last year, you know, we approved the budget in January, and between January and June, there was a.
But it doesn't matter, because once we develop the budget, that's the number we're going to have, which is why this is a very, very careful process. So you're looking at a moment in time that has hundreds of thousands of dollars of swing based upon, you know, students arriving in district. So we have enrolled 15 students in the last three weeks. And several of them came with IEPs, and some of them came with some substantial needs. So again, you're constantly evolving the delineation of your budget. But once we fix the number, that's the one we go with. Exactly.
Okay, so yeah, my question was, just to help me make sense of it, you answered it, but, but correct me if I'm wrong with my analogy, and maybe because there's so much influx, my question might already be outdated by the time I ask it. So it strikes me less, so it's not, it's not a credit, it's more an insurance reimbursement that we've had to pay out of pocket first, and we're not getting reimbursed at the full amount because it's cost us more to, because of what happened. And so we're recouping or being reimbursed for some of that. But it can only be used for special ed, but if it frees up other money, then the other money can be used that way.
Yes, and the, and the only thing that I would add is that, you're not, when you reflect back on the recoupment, it is on, not the last fiscal year, it's the one before. So basically, right now, in '23, we had, we have a significant number of out-of-district. We won't see those, pardon the expression, financial offsets or reimbursements from the state until '25. So that's why I get so tricky about it, that's why we try to, I mean, different districts do it in multiple ways, but.
Well, so, so I think, it's too funny. I think as you think about it's better to keep it, keep it simple in your mind, which is, the state gives you some money to help cover out-of-district costs. They don't give you enough, but they give you some, and then you budget what else you need, you have to have. And the town pays the difference, the gap, right? And this year, because we have students rotating out, our numbers went down, and so the allocation is a good match for us. And that just means, based upon how we budgeted last year and the amount we're carrying from last year, but by zero-based budgeting, you always pull that back and move it around anyway, we're showing it to you right now in the current allocation it's sitting in. And then the out-of-district funding will be allocated by circuit breaker and then whatever else we need in budget. So again, I think you see the money, but it's basically, that's, that's salary. I mean, you know, it's, it's basically, it's budget money sitting there. And we're just telling you that there's $900 worth of budget money we can move somewhere else, which is what we're doing all the time. We're moving buildings and grounds money, like, so when you're building your budget, we're saying last year in '23, we had this much over here for special ed out-of-district. Okay, we can, for zero-based budgeting, apply less budget funds of about 900,000 to out-of-district, which allows us to apply that funding across our budget elsewhere. So you see it that way, and it's confusing, but it is how you have to kind of wrap your head around it. Okay? And then the town similarly gets money back, they get chapter 70, which comes from the state to pay off some of the costs of education. And that chapter 70 drops into the allocation of the town side, and they use it to budget.
So to be correct, what happens to it, chapter 70, is it goes into the general fund of the town, and in effect ends up as free cash.
Or it just ends up similarly as an offset to the overall budgeting costs of the year, because we spend much more than what the allocation would be that they get for chapter 70. So it's kind of similar, it's kind of like, if you get a certain amount of chapter 70, it allows you to balance your budgeting in different places and use the funds you've had to rebuild this year's budget and move your allocations around. So that's what zero-based budgeting is, you don't just leave it there because it was there. Every year, you build from zero and you move it where you need it. So this year, there's 900 that was there this year that we're going to move somewhere else next year, is how you want to think about it. Okay, so that's a lot. I'm hoping that, you know, that makes sense. From here, Dave and I keep working.
That's good.
We, I think we then bring you a final recommendation where we pull all those numbers together. Okay?
No, very well done. It was really, very, I really appreciated the presentation, the way it was set up. Very, very poignant slides, thank you.
So.
Tried not to be, you know, rude and interrupt you with the volleyball update, so I do it between, but we've won three straight sets, or mat, you know, games, and that was about 45 minutes ago.
Oh, yay, all right.
Congrats.
Another game to see, then.
With that note, we are moving on to capital planning presentation.
So I'm going to help you gain time, all right? I am not going to move us through an in-depth discussion. I just want to provide some updates, which is, if I had had the draft of the presentation I'll use tomorrow ready for my talking points, I would have shown it to you. I don't, I have to do it tonight, so we need to finish, so I can go home and do that. And what I will be doing is highlighting to the capital subcommittee, of which Steve is a part, I'll be going with Kelly and Dave and Bob, and we'll be presenting. We'll be highlighting our five years of areas of focus with a main emphasis on providing information and answering questions for them around the FY24 requests. And that will be the Hastings School roof, and it will be the Mill Pond roof restoration, where in doing the restoration of the seal coating, we gain probably 10 to 15 years on how far we can push that roof repair out. That's money well spent. And then those would be the two capital items that we would be forwarding for FY24. You've heard us talk in depth about these, you've seen them. I just want to reiterate for you what I'll be talking through tomorrow with Kelly's support. And then we'll look at FY25. I'm going to prepare slides to kind of give them talking points on '24 and '25. I don't think they're going to want to push out beyond that, but I'll basically be prepared to talk through with Kelly, information on all of these. I'm not doing any kind of an elaborate slideshow, they got a lot of information from us. I think Steve feels like they're well-prepared, and that's what will be coming forward. I do want to telegraph one item, which is, not now, because we've already submitted all of our slides and our deadlines, but we need to fold technology purchases that are larger, and we're talking about how to manage that. Whether or not we want to package the cameras into one request, and we would make a request for FY25 to do all the cameras across all the schools in one bid and one package, or whether or not we want to try to, you know, break out small parts and work on it over time. Either way, it's not going to be in '24, but when we resubmit next year, a number one priority for '25 would be whatever the cost would be for the remaining cameras that we would be doing to bring security to the same level for all of them, all of our buildings. I'm waiting on that because I also think, John thinks he might be able to apply for some grants, so we're just, we've got some more legwork to do on that. He did the pricing to bring all of our buildings to a place where you have security cameras at all of our buildings available to us, and it's running at about 120,000, I think it was altogether. It would probably be most advantageous to package it as one bid and get one vendor to come and do all of it, I think, and that was John's feeling. We're just discussing what makes more sense, and we're going to apply for grants first, and then we'll fold it in for requests for FY25.
And for those at home, you should know that we, the school committee, have received the details of each of these years in our packet. So it's not as if we haven't seen exactly what these are each entail, you know?
50 pages.
Yeah. Current estimates, rough order of magnitude on everything, and nice backup from Kelly G. Capella of Buildings and Grounds, Assistant Buildings and Grounds Director, she's done a really nice job with this, and she'll be on point tomorrow to present. Again, these adjust every year and move around, they did a very nice job, and you've seen this already, they've presented it to you, and you approved these to move forward. I just want to let you know, I'll be there presenting tomorrow, and I'll be doing a simple slide deck to go with them. Okay?
Thank you. So, moving along, the next regular session meeting of the school committee is scheduled for Wednesday, November 30th, 2022. And now, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, I can make the motion. I make a motion to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, the administrators' union and teachers' union, and under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes from November 9th, 2022, executive session. And I feel that the discussion at executive session would be detrimental to negotiations.
Second.
And this meeting will not reconvene in an open session afterwards. So roll call, vote?
Bachelor, yes.
Vincent, yes. Edinburgh, yes?
London, yes.
Dorit, yes.
Okay, so we are in executive session. For those here, we're going to ask.